Twenty-three, regular meeting of the Harney County Board of Commissioners to order, and ask Commissioner Lewis Weather to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and invocation.
Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. Most gracious heavenly Father, we thank you, Lord, for another day that you've given us. We thank you for the opportunity to come out and do the business of Harney County. Lord, we thank you for all the people that are in attendance, and we ask that you bless them, be with us as we go about this business, and may everything that we do be pleasing in your sight. These things we ask in Christ's name, amen.
Thank you, sir. At this time, the Chair would like to take a moment of privilege and recognize Representative Howard Penny for joining us today. Thank you very much, sir. Thank you. All right, and we'll go ahead and get started. We'll consider any additions and deletions to the published agenda.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the published agenda.
I've got a motion and a second to approve the published agenda. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Harry Janusley, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the consent agenda.
A motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Harry Janusley as well, Madam Clerk. All right. At this time, we will open the floor for public comment period. Public comment period will consist of thirty minutes. Each presenter will have three minutes in order to present. It looks like we've got a long list today, so we'll go ahead and get through this. First on the list, I have Ms. Lynda McDonald.
Can you switch it up?
Sure. Your name, ma'am?
Lee Tindall.
Okay, yes, Ms. Lee, I have you first then.
Hello, I'm Lee Tindall, and my address is 3295 Old Stage Road of Irwin. And good evening, ma'am, I'm sure. Good evening, Commissioners, and Representative Penny, thank you for being here, and my fellow Harney County residents joining this evening. As you will hear this evening in our purpose for being here, we have a big mess on Old Stage Road South, just outside of Irwin. Personally, I've lived there for fifty-one years, all of my life, and I've never seen anything like what's going on there now. It used to be a nice place to live with good neighbors who took pride in keeping up their homes and their yards and the property, well-kept and safe, but it's not that way any longer. Over the past year, there has been a huge decline in safety to what appears to be a neighboring property owner allowing strangers who have recent theft and drug use records to take over, make camp, insufficiently kennel their barking dangerous dogs, and conduct unusual suspicious activity all hours of the day and night on his land. My three-minute speech cannot paint you a picture clearly of what we all have been through in trying to unnecessarily protect ourselves, our properties, and the money that has been spent in doing so. The properties are junky and becoming more so due to these drug users, thieves, and all-out criminals who not one are contributors to our society, let alone pay Harney County taxes as my neighbors and myself do. They have originally arrived out of nowhere, and I'm here to tell you, we have never had to put up with such, and enough is way enough. On several occasions, Harney County Sheriff's deputies have been called out to the property in which we are genuinely most grateful for, and them trying to help, but they themselves are limited to what they can do, as well as Mr. Randy Baker, who we really appreciate in offering any of his help that he could provide. But really, to give you a better picture, here's what we're facing. What law has been broken if the property owner isn't making these people leave the vacant land area and the woods that they track back and forth to? What business do they have in those woods, day or night? Is the property owner allowing and possibly getting a kickback from any of this crazy activity going on? Or because he's considered an elderly man, is he being forced or threatened by these people? These people have taken over this land. Who knows? Maybe, I've watched one too many criminal shows, but what I do know is, no way can these people take up and cause any more upset in my neighborhood any longer. They gotta go. Thank you.
Ms. Lynda? Yes, ma'am.
If we look alike, we are identical twins. I am Lane Massengill. I live at 3298 Old Stage Road South, Irwin, and good evening, and thank you. Last October, I made contact with Randy Baker to explain that unknown individuals were living in an abandoned home that my sister spoke of. For twenty-plus years, this house has been abandoned, which is the property of 3398 Old Stage Road South in Irwin. From there, matters became worse for our neighborhood. In November, I found myself chasing a young man who was wandering in my backyard near the woods as I am armed with a knife in my hands in case of an attack. Moving forward in time, the abandoned home was now occupied by several individuals. On Saturday, January the fourteenth, the house caught fire after multiple times of these individuals being told by county officials to leave, and they were not to be in the home or on the property. This was what we thought was going to be our saving grace. The house was finally condemned. The property owner met with county officials and was instructed that he pay to tear down the home, or the county would take on the burden with the possibility of losing his property. Mr. Robert Lee McClam tore down the home with the help of those individuals that were living in that abandoned home. From here, many neighbors were complaining of hearing generators all of a sudden. So we, and myself included, called the sheriff's office as a noise violation complaint. These individuals were now making camp on that property, living outside in the cold. Then, to carry on through time, on February the twenty-fifth, one individual by the name of Andrea Byrd that began this entire fiasco was arrested, and things seemed to get a little quieter, but then another individual known as Janet Hubbard began to look after things on the property. Ms. Hubbard would arrive every evening around five or six to visit the property on her three-wheel motorcycle. It appeared that she was checking on several dogs and on the property, but for four or five hours, what was she doing? These dogs that I speak of are mean vicious dogs like German Shepherds and rock wilders that from time to time had been known to tear loose from the chain and roam into neighboring yards. Many neighbors feared for the safety of their children as well as themselves. Spring has come and gone, and now summer to soon end, and we will enter into another October of living next to individuals who refuse to leave the property and, as of Sunday, look to be cleaning the property up to place a camper patiently waiting for a home on that vacant lot. I stand here before you tonight asking, no begging, you to please help our neighborhood. Please help our neighborhood. Thank you.
Ma'am, was your name Lane Massengill? Or not Ms. Lynda McDonald? All right, so Ms. Lynda McDonald, you're up, ma'am.
I'm Lynda McDonald, and I live at 3340 Old Stage Road South, and my property joins this that they've been talking about. And I'm at home all day by myself, and I see a lot. You know, when they're over there, when the house was there, I know that they were selling drugs, I'm pretty sure, because cars would come and they'd go out and hand them something, and then they would leave, and another one would come and all this. But my concern is, we've never had anything like this in our community. We've not had a drug lord or people selling drugs out of home or out of a campground or out of a trailer that they're now preparing to move over there. I feel, for my safety, a lot of times I wouldn't go out in my yard because of the dogs that they keep over there. And I have put up cameras, which has cost me a lot of money, and when there's a dog out in the yard, CPI notifies me, and so I know not to go out. And my whole backyard is fenced in, and that's the only place I can go, that I feel safe where the fence is. But I urge the Commissioners of Harney County, we have got to have some kind of ordinances or zoning or something to stop this, because I know it's happening all over Harney County. I hear about it, other places, other hotspots that's as bad as ours are worth. And even my neighbor down the street, just below Mr. McGagney that's going to speak, they've got a shipping container in their front yard. Who needs a shipping container in their front yard in Harney County? I mean, if they had it on the back of their property or down in the woods, that wouldn't be so bad, but no, they put it in their front yard. But I urge you to let's get to work and do something to get this cleaned up in Harney County. If we need more money appropriated for more help, maybe that would help. Maybe we could get some more help for Mr. Baker's team that works so hard. So I'm just begging you to let's do something to get this cleaned up. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Chad Massengill.
I'm here.
Mr. Mike Mulcany.
Good evening, folks. I appreciate you taking the time to listen to what we have to say. My old baseball umpire from high school, how you doing, Mr. Matthews? I implore you to not only listen but to hear what we're saying, because this has gotten way out of hand. There's gonna come a time where we're gonna need to propose There's gonna come a time where we're gonna need to propose that we change the name of the road from Old Stage Road to Old Skid Road. It's that bad. I have a front row, all three of these areas that they're talking about are right across the street from my house. I have to walk outside with my wife and my grandson armed so they can go to the neighbor's house so the pit bull across the street doesn't attack them, which he has done. Thank God he didn't get fleshed, but he was after it. And that's because of the mismanagement of the property across the street. I have seen all manner of criminal, druggie, miscreant come in and out of that place, especially in the, is it Mr. Lee? His house. It's like a flop house. There are people in and out of there. You need a scorecard to keep up with it. You don't know what they're doing. But there's a constant flow in all three properties that are across the street. To the right, what is now supposedly vacant that has been torn down has also been a hotbed for God knows what. Again, it's the same thing. It's a constant influx and outflow of people. My job for the last three years, I've been on the road. First, had to go chase the COVID bug in New York City. I was, what you heard the COVID respond to, I was one of those. I don't feel safe leaving my family anymore to go do what I do to save lives. I can't. I won't. That's unacceptable. That's absolutely unacceptable when I don't feel I can leave my family in my house and go perform my job to help other people. I can't. So this has far more, it has further reach than what you're aware of. So the people that I can't help may have some dire outcome as well. But I appreciate your time. I appreciate you listening to me. Please, help us, or tell us what we need to do. Glad to help you out, too. I'll do, if you need to put an officer on my front porch drinking tea with me all day, happy to do it. Happy to do it. I'll sit there, welcome at my house anytime. I don't care. I want something done, because I've had reports of not only the people on the girls' properties, but also on mine. The elderly gentleman across the street, Mr. Johnson, has said they've been paroling in my property at night, at 3:00 or 4:00 o'clock in the morning. And I can tell you, if I see it, we're having a different conversation. I will not tolerate it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Aaron McClam.
Thank you for hearing this today. I appreciate it. These people are talking about my father. I stay at 546 Green Hill Road, Franklinton, North Carolina. I left Harriet County maybe 25 years ago and moved to France. Well, then everything was good, but then in 2008, my mother got sick with cancer. And my father wasn't taking care of her, so I came down to Harriet County and I got her, took her back to Franklinton, and that's where she died, was at my house. So I just want to say, I feel for all of y'all. I mean, I understand. My dad, he's one-track mind. He's a lowlife like the rest of them, my mom will say. What these people are talking about, he's one of them. Maybe he wasn't back years ago, but he has become one now. I don't know what to say. My wife and I own the property where he stays now, it's a brick house, but the vacant property they're talking about is in his and my mother's name. Well, I talked to the sheriff, Wayne Coats, before I left the house. He finally called me back. I had to message him for him all day long for him to call me. He told me that the best thing he can do is, he can get him out and get him out of there, evict him, but out of the house, out. But if he does that, then Mr. Coats said he's scared that he'll sign that property, that vacant property, over to one of them. And then you will never get him out of there if y'all don't do something about it, because as it stands right now, stealing his name. So, I mean, if y'all don't do anything, could be signed over to one of them, then I don't know what's gonna happen. I don't have no rights over that land, except if he dies, it's mine. But until then, it's up in the air. It's whatever he wants to do with it. So again, I apologize to all of y'all, but I just want to come and speak because I feel like I owe the neighbors. Most of these I was raised up with. You know, we grew up together, but I'm sorry. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Ms. Elizabeth Long.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Just real quick, came to talk about something, but real quick, you now see your law enforcement problem come forward. It is unfortunate that they're trying to get you to do that man's job. It is unfortunate. Everything they have come to you about sits in that office. The solution sits in that office. Ladies and gentlemen, by law, the only solution these five people have by law is they can take a vote and remove the sheriff and appoint someone who will provide you with the services and protections you deserve. By law, they cannot do anything else. You want something, there he is. Find him, get him to do his job. If he can't do his job, ask the commissioners to do their job by law and remove an inept, inadequate sheriff, so that you, as longstanding families and good people of Harriet, can feel safe in your homes, and when you leave the county, you will feel your family is safe that you leave behind. By law, don't bring this fight to the commissioners. Take it to the man who you gave money to, who you gave your vote to. Take it to him. They have their job description to do. Don't make them do Wayne Coats' job. If Wayne Coats is not doing his job, tell the commissioners to remove him, because they can, because they can. That's all they can do for you, for your protection. By law, all they can do is remove Wayne Coats. You are living the consequences of your vote, of your blind vote. You're living the consequences of your elections. It's not the commissioner's problem. It's Wayne Coats' problem. That's his job description. Talk to him. Don't let him get away with it and come, we harassed them enough on their job description. Don't let them take on Wayne Coats' job description as well. There he is. You will not see him very often, but there he is now. Corner him with your petition. If he doesn't do what you say, ask these guys to remove him and appoint someone who will do what you say, because it is your money paying his salary. The sheriff's department cannot owe, that department cannot get any more money from the county, because they already get the lion's share of the county budget. The biggest share of the county budget goes to that department. You'll be taking money away from the schoolchildren. It's already $17 million more than they give to the schools. So how much more should the children be deprived to continue to mollycoddle an inept sheriff? That is what you're living with, his ineptitude. Mr. Franklin County, you guys removed an inept sheriff. Help these guys remove this one.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Alan Long.
My name is Alan Long, 234 Hamilton Road, Barnwell. After hearing all this and seeing so many people who are about fed up about what's going on, I got people flying around in vehicles, tree line just below, nearly at dark, dangerous, maybe 10 feet from the trees, dropping drugs off everywhere. I've seen them jump out at night, parachuting into people's farmland next to the woods a couple of times. If I'm seeing it and I'm not looking for, why hasn't the sheriff department not catch anybody? They're parachuting and they're flying the stuff. If you cannot even stop drugs from coming to the back of your jail, how the hell are you gonna help to handle the drug problem in the county? I'm sitting here saying also that when you have an employee or someone even who is elected that needs to have credentials to have the job, and it is part of the county job, you need to pull his file, his personal file, to check to see if he even qualified. We have people telling, and we asked many questions, saying that he did not get timestamped. Technically, that makes him not the sheriff. It also means that there was some fraud involved. There was something that happened while I was in the Board of Education office, after hours, after the deadline was passed. Therefore, if he didn't have it in when the deadline was, just before the deadline, five minutes when I was there, how the heck did it get in there at all? And there was an altercation with something, and so they made up a reason, so they came there with Aaron, Meredith, and someone else, and they went and filed a complaint against this guy, who they later didn't do anything about it, they just didn't listen to him properly. It was an excuse to get the police inside, in my opinion, because nonetheless, couldn't they handle that at the desk? They went inside to the back room to handle the complaint, and they were carrying papers. We ask that you review those records, but as far as I'm concerned, that's a felony, that's fraud. And you can pull those records and check, but I don't think there's a timestamp on there. Everybody else has got a timestamp. Now, because there is personal records, how convenient, even though it's a requirement for the Board of Elections, it's nearly impossible for us to get a hold of that. Now, I'm asking you to do the right thing. I'm saying we need to investigate and check what happened and see if, in fact, there is a timestamp on that paper. It was new. They just started that paper that they had to fill out that year. And no matter what, he should have known better. He has people who are supposed to tell him what's right and what's wrong, what needs to be done. We need to investigate. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, last I have on the list is Mr. Jacob Dooley.
I'm good.
You're good?
Yeah.
Too easy. At this time, I will now close the floor for public comment. We'll move on to item number six, Sand Hills Antique Farm Equipment Club Annual Report. Gentlemen?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, guests, and friends. I'm Alvin McCarty. I'm the president of Sand Hills Antique Farm Equipment Club. And as a club, we organized in August of 2000 with six charter members. And as of this date, I'm one of the four charter members that are left, so you can tell time's moving on. We'll look on the lighter side a little bit tonight, okay? Our mission, as adopted when we organized, was to present southern, to preserve southern agriculture through restoration and display of antique farm equipment at work, and to provide educational and fun activities for North Carolina of all ages. As agreed 14 years ago, when we contracted with Harriet County to build a farm park, agreed to give an annual report each year in August. As of now, we have 70 members, families, we call the whole family the members, one person pays the dues. As of now, we have 70 families. As a club, we put on two shows a year, one in the spring, which is in March, another in fall, which is October, which is coming up soon. We also do exercise days for fifth graders. We do two in the spring, two in the fall. That way, we can cover all the fifth graders in Harriet County. So also, we do scholarships for FFA members that qualify. Two $1,000 scholarships a year. We also do, we provide money for camp, FFA members that are not, do not have enough money to go to camp. We do two in each school, two for education and two for recreation. I would like to invite you to observe these things that we are doing by coming out and seeing what we are doing. We feel like we're an asset to Harriet County. We'd like to thank all the commissioners over the years. They've been real supportive of our work. And we also do shows other than our own. We do the Raleigh Gotta Be Festival in April. We do the Benson Show in April, Carthage Show in November, Sanford Show in October. We also do the parades in Lillington and Broadway. This is just a few of the things that we do as a club. We try to support our communities and our county every way we can. So this is just a portion of what we're doing. So come out and join us. We work a little, and we have fun a little, so. And to do the $30, and $30, take care of your family if they're living under your roof. Thanks again, and God bless y'all.
Moving on, item number seven, public hearing on proposed zoning change, Plan 2307001.
Hi there. Good evening, commissioners. Sarah Arbert, a long-range planner with Harriet County Development Services. We have three items on the agenda tonight. The first two are rezoning cases, and the last one will be presented by, it's a text amendment, will be presented by our manager, Planning Services, J. Seix. So our first item tonight is case Plan 2307 CR001. The applicant's Mr. Andy Cariolo. He's requesting a rezoning from the RA30 zoning district to commercials. The property is located at 190 MacArthur Road and Broadway that's located in the Upper Little River Township. It's right at the corner of US 421 North and MacArthur Road. And as you can see on the vicinity map, this is a partial rezoning. He's only applying for that portion north of the Roster Pittman Road in between US 421 North. It's about seven and a half acres of the 22-acre parcel. So the section of the property is to be rezoned is currently vacant. It's being used for agricultural purposes. And the section just below there on Roster Pittman Road is used for a single-family home as well as agricultural purposes. Surrounding land use consists of single-family residents, a manufactured home park, and more agricultural activities are located in the area. As far as utilities available for the site, there is public water available, no public sewer, though, would be reliant on a private septic system. Transportation counts have been provided there for your review, and this is a traffic-controlled intersection with a signal. Site distances on the property on all three road fronts are described as good. Looking at the zoning district map there, you can see this is the area that is predominantly RA30 residential agricultural. There are two commercial parcels there, just to the east, one being a Harriet County commercial zoning designation, the other one being with the Broadway ETJ. The land use classification, so the property is located in the rural center's land use, so that is a development, though, that's a so that is a development node that's designed to encourage economic development in small commercial centers throughout the county. Staff has provided several photos of the site for your review. Taken from, from each, each road front there. So, through staff's evaluation, staff found that the, the impact to the adjacent property owners would be reasonable. The property is located at the intersection of US Highway 421 and MacArthur Road, which has been identified as a non-residential development node on the future land use map. Staff found that the underlying land use for the property, rural center, and is, the, excuse me, the requested rezoning is compatible with the underlying land use for the property rural center, since it is a development node encouraging small-scale, non-residential development. The land use classification, again, is to reinforce countywide economic development goals with land use decisions. Staff found that the requested zoning designation would enhance the public health, safety, and general welfare due to the potential site improvements that would be required for commercial development. Staff also found that the, the project did not need to be evaluated for small-scale rezoning due to the underlying land use as well as the, the size of the property. Staff suggested, statement of consistency is that the requesting rezoning to commercials reasonable because it's compatible with the county's future land use plan. The intersection that the property is located at is identified as a development node which encourages small-scale commercial centers. Therefore, it is recommended that the rezoning request be approved. At the August 7th Planning Board meeting, the Harnett County Planning Board voted unanimously four to zero to recommend approval of the rezoning due to the compatibility with the county's future land use plan. There's nobody present at the meeting to speak in opposition. Staff's open for any questions from the board, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any commissioners have any questions or comments before we open the floor? At this time, I will now open the floor for public hearing on proposed zoning change for Plan 2307001. If anybody would like to speak in regards to this subject, now is your time. Well, seeing nobody move, I will now close the floor for public hearing, and I'll entertain a motion regarding this proposed zoning change.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Take it.
A motion and a second to approve the proposed zoning change for Plan 2307001. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Here's an amnesty, Madam Clerk. Okay, next on the list, I have a public hearing on proposed zoning change from RA30 to RA20 for Plan 2307003. Up again.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. So, our next, next case is Plan 2307 CR003. The applicant is Triangle Land Partners LLC. They are requesting to rezone a property from the RA30 to the RA20R zoning district. The property is located at 4155 NC27 West in Lillington in the Upper Little River Township. So, on the vicinity map, you can see that this case is also a partial rezoning. There's a small portion of the property located just south of that red line that is already zoned RA20R, which is the requested zoning designation. Everything to the north of that, within that red area, is zoned RA30. So, the subject property is, it's a large parcel that's currently used for agricultural purposes in a rural home site. There's a stream that traverses the southern section before terminating in the Upper Little River just to the south of the property. So, there, the section of the property surrounding the stream contains wetlands, there's a small area there that's also located within the 100-year floodplain. So, the majority of the property is identified as agricultural on the future land use map. The agricultural land use designation encourages low-density residential development at a density of up to one unit per acre. The remainder of the property, substantially smaller portion, located in the southern property line, is designated as environmentally sensitive areas. Again, this is the section of the property with the 100-year floodplain where the, the stream goes, and it's just sitting, sitting closest there to the, to the river, there's some wetlands in that portion of the property as well. For utilities available to the property, there's public water via eight-inch water line. The property would utilize private septic systems. Looking for transportation information, there's about 5,000 daily trips on this section of NC27 West. And site distances heading from the site are moderate if you're facing west from the current driveway, and good if you are facing east. So, here in the zoning map, you can see that portion of the property that is already located within the requested zoning designation, as well as the, the RA30 there to the north, and some of that RA20R down to the south and heading back towards the town of Lillington. What staff has also included in the staff report is what is from our Unified Development Ordinance's compatibility design, a concept table. So, the base minimum lot size in the RA20R zoning district is 20,000 square feet. This chart shows if you look under the RA30 zoning district, that you can get down to that base minimum lot size of 20,000 square feet due to the zoning, the land use, as well as the availability of water there. You know, if, if the developer were to provide street trees as well as sidewalks, curb and gutter. So, if you, if you provide a couple extra amenities with the residential development, you know, at that point, you, you could get down to 20,000 square feet. It's also shown there is just the, the minimum lot size that, that would, could be a possibility if it were developed using the compatibility design chart with the RA20R zoning as well, just using the same criteria with the zoning, the land use, and the water, and then, you know, providing the street trees and the sidewalks curb and gutter. Right, this is the land use classification map, it's just showing there that everything in blue is the agricultural rural residential, and everything there in the green is just that small portion, but is that, that is the environmentally sensitive areas. You can see that sort of stretching there to the south as, as you get close to the Upper Site, staff has provided several pictures of the site for your review. Okay? And through staff's evaluation, staff found that the impact to the adjacent property owners in the surrounding community would be unreasonable, as the proposed request to rezone would potentially allow for higher intensity uses and more residential units than the current zoning designation permits, which could result in a greater impact on adjacent properties. Staff found that the requested rezoning is not compatible with agricultural and rural residential land use classification. Agricultural and rural residential land use classification is designed to limit impacts on agricultural operations by encouraging low-density residential developments with densities of up to one unit per acre. The proposed rezoning of the property would potentially allow for more residential units than what is compatible with the underlying land use. Staff found that the proposal would not enhance or maintain the public health, safety, and general welfare. The proposal could potentially allow for higher intensity land uses and residential developments with more units, which is incompatible with established low-density development patterns and ongoing agricultural activities in the vicinity. As staff found that the, the request did not need to be evaluated as a small-scale rezoning, as the parcel's approximately 95 acres, and a portion of the property is currently located in the requested zoning district. Stated in the valuation, the requested rezoning to RA20R would have an unreasonable impact on the surrounding community based on the compatibility with the county's land use plan, and the surrounding land uses in the vicinity, therefore, staff did recommend denial. At the Planning Board meeting on August 7th, the Harnett County Planning Board voted unanimously to recommend denial of the rezoning. The Planning Board stated the desired minimum lot size in the requested zoning district could be permitted in the current zoning district if the applicant developed the property using other processes, such as utilizing the county's compatibility design, concept table, or developing the property perhaps as a planned unit development. There was nobody present at the meeting quite speaking opposition. We did have one citizen who stood up and spoke, who expressed concern that the development of the property would increase water runoff and adversely impact his adjacent family farm, which is just downhill from the subject property. Staff is open to any questions from the board, thank you.
Commissioners, do you have any questions or comments before we open the floor? This time, I will now open the floor for public hearing on proposed zoning change for, from RA30 to RA20 for Plan 2307003. Anybody would like to speak in regards to this matter, now is your time.
Scott Brown, 409 Chicago Drive, Suite 112, Fayetteville, North Carolina. I am here on behalf of the applicant Triangle Land Partners. We are the engineer and surveyor of record for a project. We put together a plan and all. I was not able to be at the Planning Board meeting, one of my fellow engineers came, but I was able to be here tonight to try to share some information that may or may not have been conveyed to the Planning Board. I don't disagree with some of the stuff that the planning staff has said, but I want to add some additional information to that. We did have, as was mentioned, public water is available, excuse me, public sewer's not available in the area, it'd be handled by a private septic system. As such, we had a evaluation completed by a licensed soil scientist, and approximately forty percent of the site is, got unsuitable soils on it, which means that limits you to the amount of lots you could put on a piece of property. Now, I know what the compatibility chart says on our R20 zone, and you can go down to a 12,000 square foot lot if you have this and that, but fact of the matter is, if you've got septic system on a lot, you cannot get really any smaller than a 20,000 square foot lot. So, we're not asking to go down to a 12,000 square foot lot, and the only way you can go down that small of a lot is sewers available, sewer's not available to the property. We've had, we did prepare the concept based on the suitable versus unsuitable soils at the current zoning of R30 and R20, and you get about 63 lots out of it. If you go straight R20, you're looking at 75 lots, you're talking about a difference of 12 lots between the rezoning request. And it's not out of ordinary or out of left field for this rezoning request, you've already got split zoning on the piece of property. And in all situations, most situations where we have split zoning on a property, we look to rezone it one way or the other so that you don't eliminate that split zoning on the property, you don't, it's not a good place to have it, it's the bottom third of the property. So, the R20 zoning results in a difference of plus or minus 12 lots. Now, what you may not know, in order to put this development in, whether it's an R30 or an R20, and no matter what it is, it's on Highway 27. As was mentioned a while ago, the traffic count on Highway 27 is about 5,000-plus trips a day, so you're guaranteed a left and a right turn lane on, no matter what number of lots you put in. So, you're looking at about a three, $350,000 cost to put left and right turn lanes in. There is an eight-inch water line on Highway 27, there's also a 20-inch water line on Highway 27. And based on current policy from Harnett Regional Water, water lines are not allowed up underneath the asphalt. So, as a result of the widening, both the 20-inch water line and the 12-inch water line will have to be relocated. So, those are, those are three hard costs regardless of the lot size. So, we're talking about a 12-lot difference between R30 and R20. And so, in order to help, to make it economically feasible, make it work, we're requesting it to go, be able to go from R30 to the R20. Now, let's look at the compatibility chart. If you want, you certainly can get down to a 20,000 square foot lot by using the compatibility chart for an R30, but that requires two things. It requires street trees, or three things, street trees, sidewalk, and curb and gutter, okay? The curbing, and it seemed like when the staff mentioned a few minutes ago, a few extra amenities, it sounds like a few extra amenities, but it's a lot more than just a few extra amenities. When you put curb and gutter in there, you bring on underground storm systems. And when you bring on underground storm systems, you bring on, you no longer qualify for low-density stormwater development, now you're bringing in storm ponds. So, those 12 lots I generated, in order to get from a R30 to an R20, I lose every bit of that, I'm, I'm back negative in order to try to use the compatibility chart. The compatibility chart does not work very good in cases where you got a, a R30 zone and you want to get down to a 20,000 square foot lot in rural areas where you got a bunch of extra costs associated with the project anyway. So, yes, you can make it work. Is it economically feasible? No. If, in order to make it work, to make the numbers, to make the numbers work, we needed additional 12 lots. We don't need additional 12 lots to cost us more than what 63 lots was going to, and that would be the case if you had to put curb and gutter, underground storm system, sidewalks, and street trees. We're going backwards, we just would have stayed where we're at and just walked away from the property and, and leave it for another day, in event that maybe public sewer would one day come to the area, and to my knowledge, there's no, no long-term plans to get public sewer in that area. So, what you essentially done, between the widening cost and the relocation cost to water line, this property is undevelopable at the current zoning. You, somebody may want it to farm on it forever, or to put some large state lots on it, but it's not developable for a single-family residential subdivision. And so, that's why I'm here tonight, asking you to reconsider the recommendation of the Planning Board, reconsider the recommendation of staff with that additional information in hand, that's, whether you may have thought of it, or it may not have been presented that information. I know some of the information was not brought up during the Planning Board, so you've got everything in front of you now to make a, to make a solid decision, you've got the information from staff. I'm not disagreeing with some of the stuff that staff says, but we're, we're not asking for commercials zoning in a residential area, we're asking to go from R30 to R20 on a property that's already split zoned. So, we're not asking to something out of left field, it's not asking something that's going to endanger the public, we're not increasing the lot count by 200%, we're increasing the lot count from 63 to 75. And I'll be glad at this point in time to answer any questions that y'all may have of me, or come back later after the public hearings close, whatever you need to be doing, but I do, I hope that you consider the information that's been presented to you here tonight, and I look forward to hearing a favorable recommendation and overturning of the Planning Board's recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Rebecca Barak, 5220 Christian Light Road. I don't have a dog in this fight. I don't live close to the land, but I want to talk about one thing that is... Melissa, could you go to slide number 317, please, and make sure that you can try to get the southern portion of that photo? What may not have been apparent is that the southwestern border of this land, you can see it right there, is contiguous with a hog farm. Now, that may be on the low side of the land, but it is right next to a hog farm, it's a Prestige, Prestige, Prestage Hog Farm that it's next to. That wasn't mentioned in the staff's report, maybe because I don't have to, but I think as growth starts to occur in each of your districts, you have to realize that if a property is close next to a chicken farm, or especially a hog farm, the affluent situation has an effect on the houses that would be around, or built, or currently in that area, and I think that's a consideration that ought to be considered in the future. So, these gentlemen either purchased the land, or got the land, knowing the same zone, knowing the zoning, that's a risk a developer takes when they're looking at a property that needs, needs to be rezoned to be able to fit their profit margin for the number of houses they need to build in. But I feel like, just as a interested citizen, that the fact that a pig farm is right there at the very southwestern border of that property, it brings some concern for the health of the citizens that will be buying those houses there. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, ma'am.
My name is Aaron Lawman, 234 Hamilton Road, Bonneville. I agree with Rebecca quite a bit. I'm trying to find out why you have a zone that's really a flood zone that's sensitive, it goes down to the river, why you would allow so close to have pig farms to begin with. They have known contained diseases in which humans catch and cause a lot of environmental problems. I don't know why you're building houses near a riverside. I don't know why you're building it in an area that could flood out, especially in the future. And if, and if you have these laws that are made, that are made properly for the zoning, then there must be a reason they're trying to prevent certain things from happening. So, why are you going to just change it so you don't have those things covered anymore as putting homes in an area that they probably should have never been in the beginning of life? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I will use this moment to highlight something the gentleman, as a developer, mentioned, and we've brought it up before. He said he wished there was public water and sewer lines. He said there'd be water lines, but there was no plans for sewer lines. As a developer, and he's going to be investing US dollars in Harnett County, he would have loved to see sewer lines coming through there so that this discussion of R 30, R 20 would not be a mute issue because there'd be no septic systems in the ground. So, please, put that somewhere on your thing, sewer lines on that side of the county. It's no longer, you know, a desolate area. It's a place where developers who are willing to spend their money in Harnett County are coming to. Let's make sure we welcome them with modern-day amenities like sewer lines.
Thank you, ma'am.
My name is Jeffrey Walker. I'm a little bit taller here. Sorry. I'm family of the folks who own the adjoining property just east of this property we're talking about. My in-laws, Junior C. Smith and Doris H. Smith, own the farm. I'm married to their only daughter, Kramer Smith Walker. And my father-in-law tragically passed away on April 29th, 89-years-old. My mother-in-law's still living. She's 88-years-old. She's unable to be here tonight to speak for herself. So, I'm speaking for her on behalf of the family. I said this at the planning board meeting. I'm not necessarily opposed to the rezoning, but I do have some very serious considerations. If you pulled up in the parking lot of Mount Ariel Church on Highway 27, you look at the telephone pole right in front of you, you can see the separation of the two farms, the separation of the two cornfields. We own approximately 50 acres on that side of the road, just south, just south of this Our concern is, when you start moving dirt around and all those things for development, that it could cause some watershed or some flooding problems or some environmental issues. We are south. We are downhill. If you pulled in the parking lot of Mount, Mount Ariel Church, look across the road, you can clearly see we are downhill from the property. That's our concern. So, we just want assurances if there is rezoning, that someone doesn't say one thing and does another thing. Since this gentleman, I think his name was Mr. Brown, brought this up about cost, I will say something about cost. I am a certified financial planner, contrary to the way I look. I am a degreed economist. I just had a grandchild, and my other grandchild had other plans for me today. So, I apologize for my dress. But I want to talk about cost. My, my in-laws have owned this property for, I guess, about a part of 50 years. This is the biggest asset they have. So, you know, we're all good people. We all have interest in Harnett County. I don't want to have unnecessary conversations about opportunity cost if someone destroys our farm, plain and simple. So, I'm trying to be diplomatic. I don't want to be contentious. I'm not opposed necessarily. I just want assurances and guarantees that our farm does not have any harm. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Brown?
Yes, sir.
Can you talk about, there are certain requirements of what you have to do as far as silt fence retention ponds and that type of thing? What would apply to this property to keep this property from being damaged?
As I understand, I think his property's on the other side of the drainage way from us. I'm not sure exactly on the map where his is at, but... It's adjoining on the east side, this side, downhill from the property. Okay. Well, the site would qualify for what the state looks at. It's not in a water, spot watershed, so it would qualify for a low-density stormwater permit. And actually, whenever you, if you were to use the compatibility chart and put curbing gutter in and put storm pipes in, you've, you've got concentrated stormwater that has to go in a pond. So, you'll have, you're going to have to have some kind of a retention measure, whether it's a pond, whether it's some kind of constructed wetlands to manage that stormwater. Now, what we're proposing, like most rural developments propose, same thing that's on 27 out there now, is roadside ditches and swamis. Now, you've got, which is better for stormwater remediation, better for runoff than concentrated water in a curb and putting it in a pipe and putting it, and putting it all at one point in one source of outlet. Now, in doing so, the, I told you a while ago, what the, the land use plan, I think they said called for agriculture, residential agriculture, community, one unit per acre. Well, if you do the math on 73 lots, you're setting it that, we're not increasing it to high yield. We're setting it to one unit per acre, or maybe not even quite you one unit per acre. But you, to answer your question about silt fence, it will be required to have all the standard erosion control practice that NCDEQ land quality requires. It still will require a permit from NCDEQ Division of Water Quality in Raleigh, but based on the 70, whether 73 or 63 lots, it would qualify for low-density, meaning you don't have to, you're not required to put permanent retention on site, but with that few, and the reason being because you got, it's not a high gener, high-volume generator of water, because you don't have, the amount of rooftop and the amount of roadway and impervious is low compared to the trigger threshold that the state requires for you to treat stormwater, which would, the curbing gutter would trigger that requirement, but the roadside ditches do not trigger it. And again, that all, that all adds additional cost to it. So, and it, you can, you can disperse that water over multiple outlet points versus a pond where you have one point source, but at the end of the day, it's still draining kind of north to south to southeast. The drainage pattern's not going to change, and when you're doing septic lots, you don't go in there and do mass grading, because if you do mass grading, you endanger the ability of those lots to have septic to work on them. So, the only grading we're going to be putting in is for the streets. The builder themselves will do minimal grading for the house pads, because you cannot come in and move a massive amount of dirt, because if you do, your septic system will not work as the county will not, won't pass it because it's no longer qualified. Does that answer your question?
The latter part did, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So, DEQ will, they dictate or they mandate what you do for erosion control?
That is correct. And they have inspectors to go out and inspect the site and make sure you're in compliance.
Thanks, sir.
Yes, sir.
So, if I, before you have a seat, if I might follow up on that?
Yes, sir.
As I, and if I miss what you were sharing, please let me know.
Okay.
But from what I understood from the gentleman's comments, the concern was in the phase of preparing the development. So, if, and, and what, what I heard, the assurance that he wanted to hear was that you were confident that there would not be damage from water runoff during that phase of getting that development up to speed prior to the lots being laid out and the houses being erected?
Correct. I don't anticipate any, any negative impacts downstream. Again, like I said, this is not a huge stormwater runoff generator, and measures are put in place to protect not only downstream neighbors, but the, there's a significant amount of the property that we're not touching, because like I told you, it's about 40% of it or so that's unsuitable. So, a lot of that property, there's a large gap of existing buffer between where we're going to turn that water loose, that before it ever leaves the property. So, we don't want to cause any undue damage on the remainder of the property itself. So, and the state, again, they'll have inspectors that go out there on routinely and issue compliance reports.
Thanks.
Yes, sir.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm concerned about the hog farm.
The hog farm?
Yes.
Okay.
How close is it to this land and all?
If you can, can you put the map back on the screen again? Distance-wise, you're probably talking about, I think we looked at it before, and I know, it may be over, is it over 1,000 feet curbing? Yeah. From the, from the closest residential house, home that we, lot that we would put into that hog farm is about 1,800 feet. There's a, communities are a lot closer than 1,800 feet to hog farms. You're in a, you're in a rural area. You're not in downtown Lillington or, or Fayetteville or anywhere like that. So, and it's, and it's, nothing going to be hid from any, any future potential buyers. We don't feel, we, we are aware of the hog farm, but we don't feel like it's enough of awareness that would have a negative impact on the future of the project.
What size is?
What size is the hog farm?
Yeah.
I have no idea what size. I'm looking, I can count the number of houses. I can't get my glasses on, but I have no idea how many hogs are there.
It's, it's, it's 3,000 of hogs, around 300 acres. And the farm and the pond where they distribute the affluent is closest to the property.
But I, it's already zoned residential.
Yeah.
So, we're not asking to rezone something from what it already is to something it is not. We're asking to modify it from R 30 to an R 20. So, let's say, for instance, the, you, you decide to uphold the recommendation from the planning board and deny the rezoning request. It's still zoned residential. If somebody's got a lot more money than they, they just want to throw the money away, and they don't mind spending a bunch of dollars, this thing can still be developed at the R 20 rate. We're putting all that extra measures in with the curbing gutter and the street trees and, and the stormwater, when it, when it's much better for the environment, to have the, achieve the same goal with roadside and open ditches, and you don't have the concentrated stormwater. So, at the end of the day, you're, you've not main, maintained any headway, you've gained any ground. It's actually, you're actually moving in reverse for the current landowner unless, like I said, unless somebody's got a bunch of money that they don't worry about where it goes and how it's spent. Thank you.
I just want to make it clear, because we've been talking about the compatibility design regulations and the additional amenities that Scott has brought up tonight. He's absolutely right. Those additional amenities cost money. It makes a better development, and, and that can be argued. But I don't, I do want the board to understand that you can do a traditional subdivision, which is what was done across the street. There's nothing that says that you have to use the compatibility regulations. You can use, you can do a 25,000-square-foot lot in RA 30 as it sits, and you don't have to do any of those regulations or the compatibility design stuff. So, I know that we've kind of talked back and forth, which in a rezoning, we shouldn't be looking this specific into what's going on the property, but I think it's important that the, that the board be aware that a traditional, normal subdivision is still on the table. You don't, you can, you can do that as it sits today. The only difference is, is they're going to lose, potentially lose a handful of lots because the lot size will move from 20,000 square feet or 15,000 square feet, whatever. He's right, because it's on septic, they'll be a little bit bigger. It'll move from 20,000 to 25,000 square foot lot. So, that, that'll be the difference. But I, I couldn't let you sit here all night, and we, we negotiate back and forth on compatibility regulations when in fact, there's the traditional subdivision out there, which is what the, what the folks across the street done.
Mr. Clerk, if Harnett County IAS map is correct, it appears to me that there are five tracts of land just to the east of this track, and all five of them are zoned RA 20. Is that correct?
I mean, if you looked at it, yeah, I mean, it, this property is split zoned right across.
This property is split zoned, but the rest of them are RA 20.
Yeah, everything in the green's going to be RA 20R. So, everything below this track plan's going, all be RA 20R. I'm not saying that you shouldn't do it. I just wanted it, the board to have all the, all the information.
Would anybody else like to speak regarding this matter? Seeing nobody move, I will now close the floor for the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, based on the zoning for the surrounding tracts of land, and based on the fact that this is split zoned, part of it's already RA 20, I make a motion that we, we approve rezoning to RA 20 for this track of land.
I have a motion and a second to approve the zoning change from RA 30 to RA 20 for Plan 2307-003. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Passage unanimously, Madam Clerk, for approval.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, Mr. Brown?
Yes, sir.
Would you be kind enough to take a few minutes with Mr. Walker and break down what you've said here in non-developer terms so that he can have some assurance of...
Yes, sir.
You know, explain to him DEQ and how it works.
Yes, sir.
I know it, but he, I don't know if he's had the experience or not, but see if you can help him out.
I will.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. And now, we'll move on to item number nine. We're going to have a public hearing on a proposed text amendment, Plan 2307-004. Good, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and the board members. Jay Sykes Development Services presenting our last case tonight, which is a text amendment. This is a text amendment for Article 5 of Unified Development Ordinance, based around the use types and regulations, but more specifically, just about how we would view uses and types that is not specifically listed in the ordinance. As we spoke about at our work session, and then several months ago at another work session, that was brought up, that we want to make sure that if the ordinance is silent on one thing or another, and it's not listed very, very thoroughly, how would it, how would the staff look at it, and does the ordinance need to be specific about that? There was, there was a case study, case law. We worked with the school of government, then also with our county legal staff, to, to basically lay out our policy and then codify it within the ordinance, basically saying, we could, we could either use staff interpretation and find a use that's specifically listed. Of course, there's always the text amendment route, and then there's the options in here about how we would specifically use that, you know, based off of types of cure, types of activities, equipments, you know, processes that may be happening. That way, we can, you know, you know, for example, you know, loop a lawn mower repair shop and a car auto repair shop into the same category. So, again, we just wanted to, to be more specific in the ordinance and just kind of lay that out in case anything ever came up. Staff recommend approval based off of legislation. Board, Planning Board also voted unanimously to approve it. No one spoke in opposition. Staff is available for any questions. Staff is available for any questions, thoughts, concerns.
Any questions or comments for staff? All right, at this time, I will now open the floor for a public hearing on a proposed tax amendment, Plan twenty-three zero seven dash triple zero four. An update to the Harnett County UDO. Anybody would like to speak in regards to this? It was your turn. Are you moving, Mr. Longman, or are you good? Just adjusting? Good? All right. Seeing...
This is John Fatschek, he's good.
All right. Well, seeing nobody move in the audience, I'm going to go ahead and close the floor for the public comment, or public hearing for the proposed tax amendment, and I'll entertain a motion.
Second?
A motion and a second for approval of the proposed tax amendment, Plan twenty-three zero seven dash triple zero four. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass it unanimously, Madam Clerk. Thank you. Discuss a request regarding the selection of the Greer Group as a part-time temp staffing agency to provide payroll services for part-time seasonal election workers for the county.
Good evening. We are back to discuss this topic again for the use of a temporary staffing agency for our election workers. This was a collaborative effort between the Board of Elections, the HR team, legal, and our finance department because it affects all of us. So we are recommending that the Board of Commissioners select the Greer Group as a part-time temporary staffing agency, and this would provide payroll services for those election workers. So the staffing agency would take on the role of onboarding and the payroll efforts, and they would take on the workers' compensation liability piece. So we put out an RFP, we received four bids, and that we chose the Greer Group, and their markup is twenty-three point six percent. So, and this staffing agency actually works with another Board of Elections. Actually, it is Wake County that they currently work with. So they do have experience with this. And, you know, the reason why we're looking at this, it is a lot of administrative work for the election workers coming in, getting them to complete the paperwork, doing the onboarding, and then the finance department has a lot of work ahead of them in paying these election workers once a month. So, but this, I wanted to be clear that it does not change right now that the way that we would select the workers. Claire would still do the same process as sending out the letters, social media, I believe Facebook, what other avenues? A letter.
Yeah. We would still send out the letter to the poll workers. We would still recruit the same way. The parties would still appoint the judges. So as far as administratively on our level, it does not affect anything with the election workers. It's just simply the onboarding and the payment of the election workers.
Yes, yes. And the big part is the workers' compensation claim, and there's actually other employment-related claims that come up. A couple of years ago, I know we had an EEOC claim for one of the election workers that our legal team spent quite a bit of time on, going back to the EEOC and fighting that case. So the other things that come up are unemployment claims. So sometimes an election worker will work one season and then they file an unemployment claim. And again, that's administrative process that we have to go through. They will not be awarded unemployment, but we still have to go through that process of completing that paperwork. And the other piece is they will do verification of employment. So you can imagine, again, that takes time for the Human Resources Department for us to do a verification of employment for someone who may work a week or two weeks or one day. On the second page, we do have the finance officer's recommendation that there are several benefits. It's the impact on the human resources staff, the impact on the finance staff, and the liability for the internal controls that come up, again, with the employment claims. The other piece, Claire did some more research today, and we have several counties that are local to us that currently use staffing agencies for this purpose. Wake, Durham, Gaston, Wayne, Buncombe, and Forside Counties are currently using staffing agencies for this purpose. And I think last time I talked to you about the cost. So last year, fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, was the highest payroll invoice for the election workers. It was around a hundred and forty thousand dollars. So with that twenty-three point six percent markup, you're looking at about thirty thousand dollars. Claire does have the money in contingency, so they have that in their budget to cover this. And again, we're just looking at trying to streamline this process of getting election workers in, doing all the paperwork, doing the onboarding, and doing the payroll piece. Any questions?
I have a question.
Uh, do, excuse me. Commissioner McCoy, go ahead.
I'm concerned, you said that this would not affect the hiring people from their county?
No, it will not affect how we onboard, how we would, it would only affect how we onboard them, like doing the paperwork in the payroll system. So as far as us finding election workers or them coming to us, that will not change that process. Now, in the future, as the county grows, if one year we fall short and Claire is not able to find enough election workers, we then could call the staffing agency to say, hey, we have fallen short and we need twenty more election workers. Because sometimes that could happen. At that point in time, we could ask them to help us recruit, but right now, that's not a part of the plan. It's just to get them onboarding, onboarded into someone else's system and for payroll purposes.
But I just want to make sure. We are not deciding on something that's going to come in and interrupt what we have here in this county and not volunteer from our own citizens to do this work. And I want to make that very clear. We don't want no agency coming in here and saying, we're going to hide this and we're going to hide these people to run our election.
Yeah.
And I'm saying this because if you're standing there telling me this is not going to affect us, I'm going to depend on your word to do this.
That is correct. It will not because to be an election worker, you have to be registered in Harnett County. So we still have to go through the system of verifying.
It doesn't matter.
And they do live here and that they're registered here. So we'll still do all the recruiting like we have been. We'll still get the names from the parties to add to those. The appointment process with the parties and the board, all of that will stay the same. This is simply just the payroll part of it.
Okay. I hear you. And I'm going to hold you to your word.
I'm sorry.
But another thing I wanted to ask, I'm sorry.
No, no, I'm cutting you off.
One more thing I want to ask you, does this have, will this interfere with the executive committee there over the Board of Elections?
No.
Okay.
Mm-mm. Because like she said, all this is doing is just the payroll process.
Okay.
Getting their HR paperwork and then just payrolling them out of the group. Everything else as far as bringing them in, working them, assigning them, balancing out the parties, that's still going to stay within the Board of Elections.
And what we envision is actually when Claire has her training sessions, I think you have three night ones coming up, that the staffing agency would be here on site enrolling those, and I'm going to be present as well to make sure that process runs smoothly. So we will make sure that the election workers understand that nothing has changed as far as the Board of Elections. It's just that they're just being paid in a different manner. So instead of being paid from our county payroll through Tyler, they are going to be paid through the staffing agency.
And so it's going to help where the election workers won't have to travel or do anything extra to get paid.
Do you have a schedule pay time when they're paid?
So typically, right now, election workers get paid after the election is over.
Okay.
So once the election's over, we send one invoice to finance and they pay them. But we may work with the company to maybe do it monthly so that they can get paid more often.
They do, yeah. And I feel like our election workers would prefer to be paid monthly. That's what we've heard. So that's what we're going to try to do. So they're actually going to get paid more frequently. Commissioner McCoy, if I could.
Listen, how much is this going to cost us?
If we go on, yeah, if I go on last year's invoice, and of course, that varies each year with the number of election workers and the number of days, right? But last year, our invoice was a hundred and forty thousand dollars. So with that twenty-three point six percent markup, we're looking at thirty-three thousand dollars.
More?
Yes, ma'am.
Here's, I've heard something right here that I found concerning is you said, should Claire run short of workers, she may recruit from other jurisdictions.
Oh, no, not other jurisdictions. The agency could help recruit election workers, but they still would be county citizens. They would have to reside in the county.
What I don't want to say, and I think I probably speak for my friends on the left side of the aisle as well, is we don't want a bunch of people from other jurisdictions coming here trying to manage our elections.
Right.
Now, I need the assurance that that's not going to happen.
They can't. They're not.
Yeah, because in order to be an election worker, they have to be registered in Harnett County. Precinct election day officials are supposed to live in the precinct with which they're registered. So that will not change. What she was referring to is if we were short, the temp agency may have other people in this area that's already registered with the temp agency that they can refer us to. But they would still have to live in the county and be registered in the county.
Well, and I will say, I have feelings right in line with Commissioner McCoy and Commissioner Morris. If they're coming in simply to help with onboarding, I think is the way you put it, with the paperwork, getting everything filed with the payroll operations and the workman's comp.
Yes.
I'm probably okay with that.
Yes, sir.
But I will tell you, I am not okay with an outside agency coming in and recruiting poll workers and staff for elections.
Yes.
That needs to come from inside the county.
Yes, and that is our intent.
And if I can't have that assurance, even if we run short, I don't want them involved in recruiting people to be poll workers.
Okay, yeah, we don't have to use that as a resource. They just have...
Okay, because I cannot support it if that's going to be part of the package.
And that's not a part of the markup. That twenty-three point six percent markup right now is just for onboarding and paying.
I think it needs to be stipulated that we will not allow them any recruiting, even inside the county.
Yeah, right now in their bid that they submitted, it did not include any recruiting.
And what was the bottom line total cost?
And I'm only going on last year's invoice because that's what we have the latest to go on. It would run about thirty-three thousand dollars.
So the total cost is thirty-three thousand?
Yes, sir.
One thing, though, it will depend on the actual number of hired and the actual work done. She's simply giving you the example from last year.
Yeah.
We don't know the actual dollar cost. And I think that the biggest thing that I want to reiterate is that this is in order for us to allow our staff that work many, many hours trying to deal with election workers, it is a difficult process given the infrequency that they work. We're really simply trying to find a better way to deal with the issues that occur both in HR and in finance in order to make this process work better when we have to hire election workers, which is every year.
Yes, sir. And if I could also add, for Janice and myself, our departments, this takes away a lot of time from our departments because they are seasonal workers, and we treat them with the same, you know, respect as our own employees. But when you've got, when you have that many people coming in at such a short amount of time, there's all the documents that we require because we have to treat them as county employees, which means they're eligible for workers' comp because we direct, according to RS, we direct where they go, what they do. So we have to run them through our payroll system. There are a lot of people and a limited amount of staff to get all of this done in a short amount of time. With that turning around when you're trying to keep up with their hours, if they don't work the full day, then someone has to keep up with the hours that they work. We don't have the staff for that. And then we have to manually put that time in. And we also have payroll liabilities if the wrong individuals are paid. So you've got so much going on in such a short amount of time that there are a lot of liability issues, there are a lot of payroll issues. So the percentage that they have mentioned, that is the cost.
Mr. Thank you. With all due respect to you and Mr. Trout, I understand what you're saying, and I don't think there's been anything voiced from any of the commissioners that I've heard that says we have, would have any opposition to payroll, workman's comp, onboarding. But I think there would be a lot of concern if any of that goes beyond that to recruiting staff, and that's what I need to be clear on before we go any further.
Yes, sir, and that was not our intention.
Will the commissioners please maintain order? And also, will the audience please refrain from interrupting and speaking out?
Mr. Morris, if you're about to make a motion, would you include the fact that hiring workers from outside of Harnett County will not be permitted?
My, I'd be glad to. Commissioner Weatherspoon, my motion was actually to table the matter.
Oh, okay. All right. Second, Ed.
I have a motion and a second order table this matter regarding the request of the Greer Group as a part-time temp staffing agency for payroll. Any discussion? All in favor of motion or tabling this?
Discussion. Are we tabling it for further discussion or are we just tabling it now?
My motion was to table it here.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass it unanimously, Madam Clerk. Okay, we'll move on to item number eleven. Discuss a request to increase the signature authority for the county manager.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, Mr. Appel presented to us last week. We had a lengthy discussion about it. Unless Mr. Appel has some new information, I would make the motion that we raise the manager's party to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Sir, currently have a motion and a second in order to raise the county manager's signature authority to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Is there any discussion?
Oh, I can agree with that.
All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Pass it unanimously, Madam Clerk. Item number twelve, discuss the appointment of a voting and ex officio member to the I-95 I-40 Crossroads AED Alliance Board, previously tabled from August first work session. I would like, we'll ask, I'm going to remove this from the table for proceed. Previously tabled on August first.
Mr. Chairman, one of the items that was brought forward, which was mentioned by Commissioner Weatherspoon at the time, was that they wanted to get a recommendation as it related to this appointment for the voting member from the partnership board. Partnership board did meet last week and they recommended the appointment be Jerry Milton from their board. So that was, I wanted to report that.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we've removed this from the table to discuss tonight.
I got a motion and a second in order to remove the item of discussion for the I-95 I-40 Crossroads off the table. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There is off the table.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the recommendation of Mr. Jerry Milton for the voting member on this Crossroads of America Development Alliance Board as recommended by the Harnett County Economic Development Partnership.
I got a motion and a second in order to approve the recommendation from the Economic Development Partnership for Mr. Jerry Milton on the I-95 I-40 Crossroads Alliance Board. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll add Mr. Milton to that board. And I didn't know if you had an ex officio recommendations, we could take those.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a recommendation that we nominate Mr. Ricky Day to serve in one of those ex officio members on the Alliance Board.
Second. Are there any other nominations? Currently have a recommendation nomination for Mr. Ricky Day for the ex officio member on the I-95 I-40 Crossroads Alliance Board.
Two of those.
Is there any discussion? All in favor for Mr. Ricky Day for an ex officio member, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass it unanimously. Please let Mr. Day know. Thank you. That brings us to the county manager's report, Mr. [inaudible].
We've got one more ex officio.
Hold on, going back to item number twelve. My apologies. Okay.
I make a motion, we appoint Bill Morris to, as an ex officio member to the I-95 I-40 Economic Development Alliance.
Second. I got a motion and a second to appoint Vice Chairman Morris to the I-95 I-40 Crossroads Alliance Board as an ex officio member. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Here's unanimously, congratulations, sir.
Thanks, sir.
Okay, now we move on to item number 13, county manager's report, Mr. Trout.
Thank you, Chairman, I appreciate it. A couple of items I have tonight. The first one is, I've informed you last week, informed the public today, that I have hired Stephen Barrington to be our new Economic Development Director. Stephen is currently the Economic Development Director in Sampson County. He comes with many years of experience in the economic development field, education, et cetera. I'm very excited to have him come on board. He slated to start September 18th. We'll do, you know, additional press release and provide more information to the public in the future. To also let you know that this week is a, a bit of a shorter week for me, in the sense that I'll have leadership Harnett on Wednesday, so I'll be out of the office, and then myself, Coley, and Coley Price, and Mike Morrow will be attending the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners meeting, so we'll be out of the office, but we'll be available up there. If you have an issue, please call. I also need a motion to approve budget amendments, as requested by the finance director.
Yes, sir.
Motion to approve the budget amendments as requested by the finance director.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the budget amendments, as requested by the finance director, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Here's unanimously, Madam Clerk. New business. Right. Discussing, consider request of approval of distribution to draw down $9 million, nine, there we go, over $9 million from the Needs-Based Public School Capital Fund NC Lottery. Would like to.
Emily will cover that.
Yes, sir, that's, that's me. So what you have before you is a, a request, it's, it's actually an application to draw down $9 million of the $10 million Needs-Based Capital Funds. If you'll remember when the school was, the plans were made to build the school, a portion of that was going to be funded by the Geo Bonds, which the county sold, and the remaining $10 million of that was to be covered by a Needs-Based Capital Grant out from the lottery. So this will just draw that down, we've recognized those expenses, and so we're going, we're requesting to draw down those funds to put back into that project. The school system, the chairman has signed that this morning, the school board did approve that this morning, so we would like to, if you so are inclined to do, to approve that so that we can send that to the state.
Thank you.
That's the final statement?
No, sir.
You know better than that. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the request to, request the distribution of $9,50,342.36 from the Needs-Based Public School Capital Fund funded by the North Carolina Lottery for construction expenses at Northwest Harnett Elementary School.
Second. I have a motion and a second in order to approve the request to draw down $9,50,342.36 from the Needs-Based Capital Fund. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Here's unanimously, Madam Clerk.
Thank you.
Do we have a need for closed session, sir?
No.
Outstanding. Entertain a motion to adjourn. Chair will second, I have a motion and a second to adjourn, we are adjourned.